Board of Trustees Meeting 7:30 PM Wednesday, August 4th. Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Project.
Mrs. Wild?
How's that?
Mr. Monahan?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Stand with me if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for those that protect us both home and abroad. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have been presented with regular trustee meeting minutes from July 21st. Pleasure the board.
Move to accept is submitted by the fiscal office without public reading.
Second.
Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I've been presented with appeal hearing for nuisance resolution 2021-0616-18. Pleasure the board.
Move to accept.
Second.
Mrs. Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm seeing no county authorities with us this evening. Do we have anyone that would like to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move right along. Program areas, Mike Little, Fire Chief.
Thank you and good evening. I've got one resolution for you tonight and some general updates we'll go over first. As you're well aware, we're well into the renovation of Station 592 and we continue to move forward. They're working on the concrete at the back, the garage building at the back's coming along. And if you drive by, you'll notice the skylights are no longer in the top of the roof over the bay and they're working on putting the decking in and getting those replaced. But everything seems to be going well and hopefully, we're hoping that here in the next week or two, we'll have, at least have air conditioning in the building so that we can begin the process of moving everybody back into the building. So that's kind of where things are at there. I got with the city of Pickerington and they provided us crosswalk signage for the crosswalk there on Lockville Road. And today, we assisted Greenfield Township Fire Department with staffing. They had one of their part-time firefighters pass away unexpectedly. The funeral service was today, so we sent a medic and an engine over there to cover them while they were taking care of their duties with the family. The resolution I have for you is a resolution to purchase a new medic chassis. This is Resolution 01. We're presenting this resolution now for your approval. However, it probably will not be paid until next year. The reason we have to present this now for your approval is because with the way COVID has affected everything, we need to secure a spot in the truck line at Navistar. If we don't secure that spot now, then we'll be six to nine months before we can secure our spot. And the intent is to replace this medic towards the beginning to middle of next year. If we have a six to nine month delay, this medic will not get replaced until early, probably 2023 at the earliest. So this is a resolution to expend $98,387.79 for the chassis. This fund, this money will come out of the capital fund. There is not a blanket certificate for this yet because it's the 2022 expenditure, but we do know it's coming out of the capital fund. The actual cost of this list is about $149,000. So there's a very significant discount by utilizing the state terms bid system.
Pleasure the board on O1.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions?
This is chassis. Is this one of the medics where we just move the box over or we have to replace the box?
This will be the last medic that we have to build and then all four of our medics will have the same Horton box and we'll be able to then go through with the re-chassis beyond that.
Okay.
Mrs. Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much and that's all I have for you tonight.
Questions for the Fire Chief, Mrs. Wild?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Dunlap?
I have none and thank you for being ahead of the game so that we don't get behind the game.
Chief, thank you for your report. Ed Rubina, Township Administrator?
Yes, good evening everyone. You have my report. I will hit a few highlights. Last meeting, I did mention that some of the trees, or it seemed like most of the trees at Bucy Park were dying or struggling to stay alive. So we did meet with Kathy Smith from Ohio University. She did, well, we did some investigation and it just appears to be a multitude of problems with the trees. For one, I don't think they were planted quite properly. They still have the wire baskets on them, they still have the straps around the trunk of the tree. And it appears that someone sprayed for weeds around the trees because there's some areas still don't have any vegetation. So we've started removing the soil and doing some, some things. And I did talk to the county extension office and they're going to stop by and look at the trees. So we are working with that. And last meeting, I also had a resolution for Kendrick Construction, which I removed from the agenda just because of the cost of the project, but I did reach back out to them and we reduced the project scope to just replace 100 feet of storm sewer pipe under the entrance of Green Gate subdivision. And we want to do this because there is some problems with that pipe that's running downhill road and we don't want to have to go back through and cut up their brand new entrance. So I do have a resolution on for that. Then also the dog park, you know, we had someone come with concerns last meeting about that. I have checked out the water fountain out there. The dog portion of fountain works fine. It's the human consumption part that doesn't work. So Robert and I are going to go out and take it apart and see if we can't get a new valve for it. Or a new one does cost $3,500. So we are working with that. And I did talk to, I believe her name was Sharon out there that day. So she knows what's going on. I told her we'd replace the eight trees this fall, you know, et cetera. And we did talk about a shade shelter. You know, I did price one last year for that or get a quote on one. So I've got a new quote, it just came in today. So we could do a 24 by 24 by nine, I'll call it a shade shelter for $10,120. And we do have the funds in the parks where we could do it if we decide to.
What was the price on that again, please?
$10,120. Of course, that's not, that's not cement on the floor. I mean, it'd just be a gravel bottom and that doesn't count any cost for permits through the city.
For what?
Permits if we'd have to be let through the city. Another program, a new program that came out for this year is a township stimulus program. This is a one-time program providing federal funds to townships for sidewalks, roads, and culverts of less than 10 feet long. So I have a resolution on tonight to allow me to apply for those funds if we pick out a project. The deadline for applying is October the 15th. And before we apply for a project, we are encouraged to meet with our county engineer and our ODOT representative just to go over the project. And you could receive $250,000 per project. So that's coming up. And also OPWC grants, you know, they're normally due in late October. So if we're going to apply for something, we do need to be thinking about a project and getting engineering and estimates and all that. In the past, you've done curbs and things like that. Also, update on comprehensive land use plan. MS Consultants is planning on attending the August 18th meeting to give an update on our land use plan. And I've heard some things about the township needing a property maintenance code. So I do have a copy of the International Property Maintenance Code. I could forward to everyone if you want to take the time and look through it. So I can forward that to each one of you. And I have a few resolutions.
Let's go ahead with those resolutions.
All righty. 2021-08-04-02, resolution to approve the East Chester subdivision street lighting. We do this every year. It allows the county to collect the taxes for that because we do assess the property owners.
Pleasure the board on O2.
O2 dot.
Second.
Any questions? Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, resolution O3, a resolution to approve contract with Kendrick Excavating. And this would to be replaced 100 feet of storm pipe along Hill Road at the cost of $31,275. And they are furnishing the pipe.
Pleasure the board on O3.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions?
As Ed said, the reason why we're bringing that to you is because it's a whole lot better to do it now while it's in bare dirt than to come back after they get all their entrance features and their sidewalks and their plantings and everything and then we cut it up. So it'll, it's a lot less expensive to do it now and it'll be in place. They will connect the two that are already there so that when we replace those, it'll be an easy transition.
Mrs. Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, resolution O4, a resolution to support the proposal of One Ohio OPOY settlement distribution plan. I'm not well versed on that. I did send information to our Mr. Horsack. He suggested we go ahead and pass a resolution. And, you know, if we do apply for the monies, Violet Township could receive $87,000, but it's over a 12-year period. It's not like you're going to get all the money at once. So as more information comes available, I'll pass it on.
Pleasure the board on O4.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next resolution, O5, authorizing the Township Administrator to apply for Township stimulus grants. So like I said previously, we need to pick out a project and we can get $250,000.
Pleasure the board on O5.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions? Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yeah.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, resolution O6, a resolution authorizing the Township Administrator to enter into a contract with Keytel Systems Data Network Support Agreement. We did talk about this a few months ago. Josh has reviewed the contract and he's fine with it.
Pleasure the board on O6.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next resolution is resolution O7, declaring the properties owned by Brian B. Virginia A. Gibson located at 7505 Columbus Lancaster Road and the adjacent 1.03 acre parcel located immediately to the west of Violet Township, A nuisance.
Pleasure the board on O7.
Move to adopt.
Do we have to have a better explanation or do we need more, Kelly?
I just want to note for the record, this property is located off Thorn Lane, south of 33. The property is littered with garbage, refuse and debris, including but not limited to household furniture, pieces of household furniture, cabinets, totes, metal buckets, metal pails, plastic pails, tarpaulins, household appliances, piles of paints or chemicals, miscellaneous building materials, bricks, doors, wood pallets, miscellaneous wood, numerous wooden metal handles for brooms, rake shovels, et cetera, numerous hand tools, carts, mill barrels filled with debris, miscellaneous patio furniture, including chairs, tables and various grills, cardboard boxes, ladders, siding, PVC tile and pipe, corrugated tile, hand trucks, tires and vehicle wheels. There's also propane tanks, tree limbs and branches, and other miscellaneous wood, metal and building materials. I also referred this to the county health department, but it really needs to be declared a nuisance. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Ms. Arco and I did go down and look at the property and take pictures.
And I will second the motion.
Any additional questions? Mrs. Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Couple of things I left out of my report. The road survey, we started that earlier, you know, a few months ago. That is complete. I will send everyone a email. It'd be an Excel spreadsheet of rating our roads. Then also, the chief and I were talking, I don't know, a few weeks ago about all of our insurance, you know, we have different, you know, vision, dental, APLAC. And we really don't have a one-stop person for employees to ask, who do I need to call? So we talked with Vanessa and we've decided that we'd put all that under the fiscal office and make Majah Eagle like the benefits coordinator or something, you know? You know, so if someone has a question, they can go to one person and she can get them, okay, you need to call this person or that person. And she could be also the person who does the onboarding for new employees.
Is that all?
Mm-hmm.
Additional questions for the Township Administrator? Mrs. Wild?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Dunlap?
I'll reserve my under the trustee comments.
I have no questions. Mr. Rubina, thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
Elected officials, Vanessa Sneak Camp, fiscal officer.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things for your consideration tonight, just informational, letting you know that the 2022 tax budget hearing was held on Monday. Ed Rubina, Mike Little, Melissa Wild and myself were present at the hearing. The amounts that were approved by the budget commissioner are included right there in the agenda for you. Overall, it is a 2.49% increase over the prior year. We also did have our Moody's rating. We maintained a double A2 and I provided all of the documentation attached to the agenda as well for that rating. We are moving forward with refunding the fire bond. It will be on the market tomorrow morning, starting at 9:00 AM. Information about that refunding is also attached there for your information. And I have a couple of resolutions. I have resolution 2021-08-04-09. This is to amend the senior award program grant that was awarded to Meals on Wheels of Fairfield County. The agreement with them for that $9,000 indicates that they cannot exceed the $9,000 nor can they use it differently than your approved budget. So what they are asking is to move $2,000 from equipment just to food. They have not seen as much need for the medicine dispensers as what they believed they would see, but they have more need for the food delivery from seniors. So it is no new dollars, it's just moving 2,000 from one line within the grant to another. They're just seeking your permission on that.
Pleasure the board on O9.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next resolution I have for you is 2021-08-04-08. And this is to approve purchase orders, many of which were already approved in resolutions prior, under Ed's area.
Pleasure the board on O8.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mrs. Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes. The last thing I have for your consideration is just the ratification of the payment of bills for July.
Pleasure the board on the bills.
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes. And that is all I have unless you have questions for me.
Additional questions for the fiscal officer? Mrs. Wild?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Dunlap?
I have none, thank you.
I have no questions, thank you for your report. Trustee reports, Mrs. Wild?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Dunlap?
Well, today, while our guys were down looking on the trees of Bucy Park, they came across a suspicious item. And it was this little thing strapped to one of the trees down inside underneath the black pipe that was put around to protect the trees. So we thought it might be drugs or something else. So we called the sheriff. Sheriff came and carefully with gloves, opened it up and inside was this. And everybody was concerned. So what I'm coming to the trustees tonight is, is what name do we want to put on this geocaching game piece?
Geocaching.
So, and it's really unique in the fact that, if I can get this back here, if I can get a hold of it, excuse me, Matt. Apparently they're all encapsled in this little metal tube and then it's a little strap to wherever they put it. And you have to go find them and then you put your name on it and you record it. And I don't know if we're surprised at the end when you find them all or not, but it was very ingenious where they had it hid, just like where it might have been, that could have been full of fentanyl or, or anything else. Because we are having a few issues down there and the sheriff is patrolling Bucy Park a little more because there's some, the various activity in there that needs to be addressed and they are doing that. So they were real interested in coming out. So you guys can tell me what you want us to sign on there and put our date. The last date on here is July the 31st by Tippel. And he's got his number and they all have a code name here. So it's unique and we ought to come up with some little name to put in there and kind of mess up their, where they passing it on, but.
Can we replace it with a little micro set of the minutes from tonight?
No, if you got them, if you've got them, we'll put them in there. But give me a name and we'll put it on there. And I thought we'd just put it back so that, because a lot of those people playing that game, the youngsters or adults or whoever, it's very ingenious how who plays them out and then the clues to go find it. And this one only has, one, two, three. Started out January the 13th. So it's moved along a little bit. I think there's one, two, three, four. There's 12 on here, so 12 people I've found it so far. Just thought that would be interesting to pass on and, and that's the only thing I had to report.
Do we need to send somebody with you when you reattach it?
No.
So they don't think you're doing a good deal?
I think I'm capable of doing that. If you don't trust me, I'll let Ed do it.
No, I'm just saying somebody was going to see you out there underneath the tree attaching something to look like.
Yeah, they don't pay attention to what I'm doing.
Well, some good news to share. We have, I had a resident contact me today and that's Mr. Keith Boardner. And his business is Cardo's Pizza and they sponsor golf outing every year. And then they've got a sponsor, Superior Beverage as well, that contributes and they're contributing to our food pantry, $5,029. And I know that we're going to try and reach out to Mrs. Sneak Camp because her job as executive director of the food pantry, so you can expect that telephone call from Keith Boardner. And if Mrs. Sneak Camp doesn't mind, you could share, and I don't want to do this wrong, but I think for every dollar that's donated, then that translates to $11 at the, at the Mid-Ohio Food Bank, correct?
Yes, it's really 11 retail dollars. So what we can purchase at the food pantry with $1 equals 11 kind of retail grocery dollars worth of food.
And it just took a call from a resident donating for me to think that that might be a good thing to share with the community. That, that tangible item of sending in a can of beans or a can of corn is a great idea. And I know I've been approached by my kids or my wife had when they were younger, that they had a, you know, a food drive the following day and we might rush out to Kroger's and spend, you know, $5 to $10 on food and send it in. And I know it's important to send in a tangible item, but I might suggest instead of spending $10 on groceries, perhaps send in a can of beans or maybe asparagus if you don't like that and attach a $10 bill. I think that's a great idea for giving the food pantry an opportunity to purchase the items that are needed because perhaps you might purchase $10 worth of things that they already have a lot of. And I'd just like to share that with the public that it's, it's something that you may not have thought about, sending cash to the food pantry.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
I think some people would probably not realize that you actually serve on the pantry board as the township's representative.
Well, I've had the honor of doing that for a while. I appreciate that, yes. And I have, I have nothing else. Does anyone else have anything from up front? We good? Events where there may be more than one trustee present?
The library event on the 14th, that comes before our next trustee meeting. I plan on being there, so there'll probably be more than one.
Okay. Anybody think of anything else?
That, everybody needs to go onto the library and look at that. They're having a big event here at the Wigwam on the 14th and it's for adults and kids and everything and it'll be a fun time and a good day.
Okay, very good. The next trustee meeting will be held at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, August 18th, 2021. Violet Township Administrative Office is 10190 Blacklake Easter Road. You have no old business, no table business, correct?
Mr. Trustee Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dunlap?
I would move that we recess the regular township trustee meeting and go into the scheduled 8 o'clock public hearing for case number 01ZC2021.
I will second that. Take a two-minute recess and then we'll begin the public hearing.
Let me call the roll.
Mrs. Sneak Camp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild? Yes.
Motion passes.
We're in a two-minute recess.
Is it neat?
Yeah, well, I would guess it were a lot of things before I would guess that's what.
Give it back. You see it? They do?
So you join this geocaching app and then it gives you clues and leads you to places. And then when you find it, you log that you found it.
Yeah.
But you don't log exactly where it was.
Right. But there's a piece of paper in there where people have been signing their, their code name and the date.
There was one buried underneath the rose bush at the food pantry for a long time. Because I would be there and I would think, what are people doing? They went in and they'd be like, oh, I just found this and just do it. I'll start down there. I'm going to come up, come up under the spotlight.
You can sit over there.
I misspoke earlier. The version you have shows red lines. The version you have shows red lines. Is the version initiated? So the red lines are the zoning commissions or provisions.
Okay. I don't have the red line thing.
Which, which is, so here's the initiated version. Here's where it started, initiated. It started with conditional use, so that happens.
So it did initiate it with board trustees. And we initiated it as what?
At some point, can we walk around the grounds to make sure that stuff is? There was a couple of things when I was over at the garden and I was like, oh, we should pull those things before the, the event on the 14th. Just to like, keep it safe. Yeah, I can do either one, actually. Not twisting this small enough. There we go. I did. Thought we were going to come up with, we're going to put Ed's name on it. Took a minute.
Did we vote on that motion?
You did. To go again, to your two-minute recess, yes.
Okay. Now we're in the
public hearing.
Thank you for your patience. We are now in the public hearing.
It's open. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider proposed amendments to the Violet Township zoning resolution, which if adopted as proposed, would amend Articles 3Q and 3A to, to make certain auto-related establishments conditionally permitted uses in the C2 district. That those uses would be vehicle dealerships operated by state licensed dealers, automotive repair shops, performing customary routine service and car washes. Such amendment would also create regulations and requirements regarding the establishment and operation of those auto-related uses. This amendment was initiated by the township trustees in May. Upon receipt of that, it was forwarded to Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, which offered a recommendation of approval. The zoning commission conducted public hearings on June 8th and June 22nd. During, in between the time when the amendment was initiated by the trustees and the public hearings, the zoning commission did meet with Mr. and Mrs. Sabatino. They are interested in the proposed amendment. Ultimately, the zoning commission did recommend approval with modification of the amendment. And you have a copy of that approved amendment. Those type uses were not permitted uses in the C2 district. They were permitted uses in the C3 district. It was determined that the best way to proceed was to make them conditionally permitted uses in the C2 district. With a C, with a conditionally permitted use, an applicant files an application with the Board of Zoning Appeals, much like a self-service storage facility, and has to demonstrate they comply with the regulations for that particular use. We've also, in, within that C2 amendment, they've upped or increased some prohibited uses. Right now it states that you can't have more than one unlicensed motor vehicle. This allows the storage in the open of a larger number of unlicensed vehicles, provided it is a state of Ohio licensed motor vehicle dealer. It talks about motor vehicle repair work being prohibited outside of an enclosed building, except for emergency repairs. After storage of any goods, materials, or merchandise that is discarded, broken, used, scrapped, or damaged. And then yards, yards for storage for obsolete motor vehicles or any other obsolete merchandise. It talks about automo, prohibiting automobile, automobile body, automotive body shops, including but not limited to those, performing collision repairs, refinishing major mechanical bodywork, straightening of body parts, painting or welding, unless all in-site vehicles that are damaged or in the process of being serviced are stored completely inside enclosed motor bu, enclosed building or structure. Generally speaking, those type of uses are permitted in the C3 district. And then it goes on to prohibit storage outside of an enclosed building or structure of any visibly damaged motor vehicle, recreational vehicle, boat, trailer, motorcycle, motorized vehicle, vehicle, or all-terrain vehicle. As previously mentioned, conditional uses, conditionally permitted uses have, generally have some criteria associated with them that they must comply with. This amendment updates Article 3A to conditional uses for the auto-related establishments and provides part regulations for off-street parking. It must comply with the existing 3X, which is parking and loading, and the zoning resolution provides a minimum lot size of .75 acres, but not greater than five acres, provides setbacks. Those are in accordance with the existing zoning resolution signage in conjunction with the existing Section 3W signage regulations for the township landscaping. There are, the landscape plan is required to be submitted. It requires a plot plan be drawn to scale and include information about the parking areas, the existing structures, storm drainage outlets, landscape materials, and quantities. Provides, there are provisions for lighting. And basically it says they need to be shielded to the actual site. There is a required traffic assessment for any adjacent road or right-of-way which the township has jurisdiction. So if the C2 district is on a township road, then we could exercise control of our traffic impact study. If it's on a county road, that's their jurisdiction and we have no control whether they want one or not. Required fencing and screening. If a property joins a residential district, then they would need to provide screening adjacent to that residential use. And that would consist of a planting hedge and tree combination maintained to provide screening from their commercial use. The required planting hedge and tree combination shall be a minimum of six feet in height at the time of installation. Mounding may be used to achieve the required height and fencing can be incorporated within that. There is a requirement that the property shall adjoin in whole or in part commercially zoned property on at least three sides. And that would be, include one property across the street, two sides or three, three adjoining sides. Then it provides some additional prohibitions for yards for storage of obsolete motor vehicles. You have to store vehicles within 15 feet of that property line. Trash containers be screened from view. And then any additional information, the Board of Zoning Appeals would request for a conditionally used permit because no site is alike. There might be concerns that are a problem in one portion of the township that may not be a problem elsewhere. And then for automobile repair shops, all repair work needs to be carried on inside an enclosed building. And no equipment processed or storage associated with you shall create odor, noise, vibration, glare, electrical interference, or other nuisances detectable to normal senses. Storage of licensed vehicles are permitted for periods of not exceeding seven days. They may be stored longer if they're stored inside a closed building. And then for automobile sales and automobile equipment, any sale or lease of automobiles shall be conducted by a state of Ohio licensed motor vehicle vehicle. And that term is defined in Chapter 4517 of the ORC. And automobiles for sale or leased by a state of Ohio licensed motor vehicle dealer, also defined in 4517. And automobiles for rent by an automobile rental agency may be stored outdoors at all times. And that's pretty much so the gist of that amendment. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Mrs. Wild?
I have none.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Dunlap? And Ms. Sarko?
The current C2 has lighting and lot size and that kind of stuff, too.
They have a minimum frontage requirement. I don't believe it has an actual lot size, but this limits it to 3/4 of an acre, which is, I believe it's the same size as the city of Pickerington.
But what I'm saying is, if there's already lighting and screening and so forth in the C2 district, is this being redundant? Or is this being more than what's currently under C2 for other things?
Jennifer, could you answer that question?
So I don't know the technical, I don't know the technical comparison off the top of my head.
For the record, so if everybody at home can hear it, say, thank you.
I don't know the technical.
Who are you?
My name's Jennifer Huber. I'm a law firm with Precious Johnson and Griggs, address is 1600 Dublin Road, Columbus, 43215. I don't know the technical requirements between the existing C2 and this conditional use, this, if it's a conditional use. The functional, what will happen, because there are specific requirements for these types of automotive uses as conditional uses, is that the specific will control over the general. So because it's a conditional use and because those requirements are contained in the conditional use section, that's what would govern.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't have confusing language that might be misunderstood.
Right. These would control.
So these would supersede what's currently in the C2 for everybody else?
Right.
Okay.
The lighting?
The reference lighting, it, the only reference is that lighting shall not, those should be on floodlights on poles, not less than 15 feet above the public road. And they should be directed so they do not impact the road. It doesn't talk about adjoining property. Screening is in Section 3E. Wherever a district but an R1, R2, R5, R7, 8, or PD district, landscaping shall be provided on all side and rear property lines which but those districts. And they shall be either a masonry or solid wooden fence that is not less than four feet, nor more than six feet in height, maintained in good condition at all times, clear of advertising, and constructed and with materials similar in appearance or construction to neighboring properties. Landscaping provided in lieu of screening shall consist of strips of land not less than 15 feet in width, planted with evergreen hedges, trees, or shrubs that are at least four feet in height, in which are dense enough to provide a dense year-round screening from the district from the budding district.
Okay. Any questions ahead?
Okay. All right.
At this time.
Mrs. Wild, no additional questions for Ms. Sarko at this time?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Sarko.
Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Sabatino? State your name and address for the record, please.
Rocco D. Sabatino, 8918 Shevington Chase, Northwest Pickerington, Ohio 43147. I am affiliated loosely with the group HonestHyphenGovernment.com. You might remember us from the community center issue, okay? And I'm not here to complain, okay, by any means. But the citizens that we work with and all have serious, serious concerns in one aspect of the township. Now, in other aspects of the township, we have nothing but praise. We have a fantastic fire department. We, we've had terrific snow removal, okay? I would say even, there are folks who are happy with the garbage pickup now, okay? And we're very happy with the administration. So we only have really one area that, that we're unhappy with, but we're very unhappy with. And everything else with the township, if we could fix this one thing, it would be terrific, okay? Now, D is going to pass out for you. In the way, the way this, the way this come about is, is through the, through the process of the community center, many, many, many of our residents got involved with this, okay? And they, they, they delved into the, the tax issue was a real big component of that, okay? And they learned things about taxes and so forth. And basically this, this is the one area, only one area, that we're not happy with the township at, okay? And that is in economic development. And the reason economic development is, they've come to realize is very, very important to our residents is because economic development supports our schools, okay? Without economic development, it's strictly the residents bankrolling the schools. When we bring in economic development, we bring in a lot of extra tax revenue. We don't send one child to the school system. We provide services that the, that the residents need and want closer to home. And we provide jobs, local jobs for people. So economic development is a very, very important issue. So we commissioned a study of which D gave you the, this is a synopsis, it's actually a video, okay? And the study come up with this, the following facts. In Violet Township, 98.21% of local households own a motor vehicle. 83.9% own two or more vehicles. These very high percentages illustrate that motor vehicle businesses are among the most relevant businesses to local citizens of any of the economic development segments. When you look at economic development segments, you can look at like the food segment, the healthcare segment, and other segments. Automotive, the reason the study focused on that segment is because it's the most pertinent to the residents here. The highest percentage, 98 some percent, okay? So, so comparison of policies between the city of Pickerington and Violet Township were made, okay? It's a comparative study, okay? The city of Pickerington policy welcomes and facilitates motor vehicle businesses on its portion of the Refugee Road Commercial Corridor. Violet Township is prohibiting motor vehicle businesses on its portion of the Refugee Road Commercial Corridor by incorrectly classifying motor vehicle businesses as 3C in the zoning code. And the catch 22 is that there is no C3 in the Refugee Road. And the catch twenty-two is that there is no C three in the Refugee Road Commercial Corridor. So it's impossible to have, to have these businesses located in Violet Township in, in the commercial area that they want to. So therefore, they're not locating here, they're going elsewhere, okay? Now, when you look at the Violet Land Use Plan map, okay, it shows that Violet Township has zero C three anywhere on its portion of the Refugee Road Commercial Corridor. The incorrect policy requiring C three zoning makes economic development of a motor vehicle business base impossible. And this is, this is what the township's been doing, okay? Now, if you go to page two, okay, you can look at the results of these policies. You can see the city of Pickerington's results, and I would remind you that the city of Pickerington, I believe, is roughly one-third of the total population of the township, somewhere around that vicinity perhaps, and they're also less area. So they have, they, they have really less opportunity, okay? But they yet have developed twenty of these businesses producing millions of dollars in taxes, okay? And the township has produced zero, producing nothing in taxes, which leaves the burden of the taxes onto the residents. The township, and this is why we're here to correct this, the township has, through the motor, vehicle segment of economic development, contributed zero to the schools, okay? And these businesses contribute a lot of money and don't send any kids to the schools. It's terrific to, to have that, plus the jobs they provide, the services, and so forth, okay? The solution is a much-needed update, and it's easy to fix this. Reclassify motor vehicle businesses, okay, to C two. This simple policy update to the zoning code makes the township immediately competitive with the city and other surrounding areas that we're not competitive with, okay? So I think you guys get, you understand that, all right? Now, the next thing is, what you were given tonight to consider to pass, you were told is, is an update to C two, okay? We disagree, because what that is, what you were given tonight, is at least C two plus. And the reason, and the way I say that is, go ahead, if you can pass it out, is they, they took these, these businesses that should be C two, and they took the, if you understand the zoning code, to simplify it, okay? When you go to the C two section of, of our zoning code, all right, it, it lists uses that you can do in C two. It also lists rules for all of those businesses. All that we asked, the citizens asked, the only thing we asked is, hey, would you just put some of the automotive uses on the list with the pizza shops, the beauty salons, and the other businesses that are allowed in C two? Just add some of the automotive uses because we need and want them, all right? And when you, when you go on Refugee Road, when you see the green sign of the city of Pickerington, all, these businesses are there. They've been there for decades, they're not been a problem, they're, they're donating millions of dollars to our community, okay? So, so then, what you got was, from the zoning department, you got what we're gonna call C two plus, because it's beyond C two. It is a case where they took the regular rules of C two, and, and as it pertains to the automotive things, they made the rules tougher just for those things. That's why I say, you haven't been given C two, you've been given C two plus, although it's called C two, okay? They made it tougher on many areas, on setbacks and on other things, and it's all in there. And unless you understand it, you know, it's, it's hard to understand. We, on our five-member board on the zoning commission, three of them are lawyers. They're very, very skilled at doing this type of thing. And, and, and so they put all those things in there that don't pertain to the rest of C two, they only pertain to these uses. And then at the end of it, after all these extra hoops to jump through, they then added, and anything else the B Z A wants to demand of you through conditional use. We are dead set against conditional use. Conditional use is to give total control over to them to, to micromanage every tiny bit of your business. There's been ridiculous cases of, 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 for conditional use, of demanding like flowers every six inches and all kinds of things like this, that, that is way beyond their, their purview. It, it leaves no, no property rights whatsoever for the citizen. And conditional use is also, those who deal with zoning a lot, okay? No, the conditional use is also a terrific vehicle, all right, to discriminate against people. If somebody, if somebody wants to come and they have to go through the conditional use process on that board, I'm not, I'm not saying it's this board, I'm, I'm not naming any names, but through the conditional use process, after somebody jumped through all the other hoops, you know, through the regular C two zoning, if they have to go to conditional use, then anything at all that the, the people on, on the, on the zoning appeal, conducting the conditional use provision, they can demand anything. And if you don't, if you don't comply, deal's off. They actually have the power of life and death of your project and your deal, because they can kill it like that, okay? And then also, they're, you know, they're humans, okay? They have biases, they have prejudices, they may not even admit it to themselves. But this, I've seen this happen, where on a conditional use, because we deal with zoning departments from here to Wheeling, West Virginia, Akron, Canton, down to southern Ohio, and we, and I've seen this, somebody may have to go through conditional use, somebody on that board doesn't like that person's tattoo, or they don't like their gender, or they don't like their religion, or they, they don't like the color of their skin. So then, then they have the power to kill their deal, okay? It's very, very wrong. It's not equal treatment under the law. Conditional use is whatever whims they have on the person that is applying for it. That's a fact. And I've seen it, I've seen people discriminated against and so forth wrongly. Now, many times the people were powerless to do much about it because they may not have the funds. The big well-heeled corporations have the funds to sue the, the people that are doing it, take them to court and win, like Liberty Township, lost millions of dollars in a lawsuit, if you recall that, that suit, okay? So my, what I'm saying is this, what you got, okay, you, we, the citizens can only talk to or hold you three individuals accountable. There's nobody else in the entire township that a citizen can hold accountable, okay? We look to you to provide the leadership and look out for the residents, all right? We're looking to you to do it, okay? And, and this has been going on for a real long time with this zoning, okay, and this deficiency. So we're looking to you to correct this, okay? It's, it's been tried in the past, and, and it didn't happen, all right? This is really a third attempt at, at, at trying to get the zoning code fixed. Trustee Dunlap, in oh eight, put this forth, it got killed. Trustee Monholland, two years ago, tried to work on fixing this, okay? And didn't get the support that, that he should have had. So the, the citizens appreciate what you have done. Now's the time, though, to fix it and fix it right, and, and, and we're recommending, okay? The, this is what we're recommending, where they gave you pages and pages and pages of C two plus. This is the only thing that's needed. That paragraph in front of you is the only thing that needed, is needed to accomplish adding C two, of those uses, automotive uses, to the list of C two, because all of the existing rules apply. They apply just the same as they apply to the rest of the list, the pizza shops and the hair salons and all that. It, they apply to, to these automotive uses, okay? And then, in this paragraph, there's still some additional protections of having to have commercial on three sides and so forth, which guarantees these businesses cannot be located in a neighborhood. They have to be located in a commercial district, all right? So, so we're recommending, we're asking you to, to pass this for the zoning update, okay? We did check with Jen, she very graciously confirmed for us twice, all right, that you have the power to take this, to take this and amend it to be what is right and what is fair to people, and, and, and what is good for the township, and where we actually may get some business for a change. You guys, you three have the power to fix this, only you three, nobody else in this township can or is, is going to, or we see no interest on anybody else, it's you three trustees. And we are the people asking you to, to take a look at this and pass this, because all we're, all we asked for from the beginning was to put the automotive uses on the list of the C two things, and they're subject to all the properties, not what, not what they did, and not what they submitted to you, which is C two, we're calling it C two plus among our group, and, and, and that's something new, because it's beyond C two, all right? They currently were in C three, and you've got no businesses at all with it. From that first list, you got zero versus the city of Pickerington's got twenty. So, make a long story short, if you go with what they submitted to you, it's gonna continue to be zero for the township, and the Pickerington will continue to grow. And we're saying, we want the township to get in the game, to put some business, some commercial businesses in here. To give an example, and we had to fight real hard, because with Jim Johnson, if you guys remember, with Storage One, he was going into the town, into the city, annexing out of the township because it was so bad. All right, well, make a long story short, that, that property was, was producing almost nothing in taxes. Jim put the, put his Storage One on there with great, 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 great difficulty, and he's paying between fifty to sixty thousand a year in taxes now, a large portion of which is going to our schools, and, and then it's distributed also for other very good things. And, and, and that's fifty to sixty thousand on that one business that the residents don't have to pick up the tab for now, all right? So, I mean, this is, this is the deal, okay? We want sensible, reasonable, robust zoning code, and, and, and we, and I've tried to, to remind people on the zoning commission, hey, look, it takes two to make a deal. People have to wanna come here, you know, and invest. Typically today, many of the, the people we deal with, if they put a, a location in, it's usually a five, six, maybe seven million dollar investment in the community. And then again, they pay tremendous taxes, provide jobs and services and all, and send no kids to our schools, all right? And, and, and with what we have here, what we've had here, they even quit coming. I used to get a lot more calls, people wanted, were looking in to come to Violet Township, and I have to tell them, no, township, township won't let you come, zoning won't permit it. One of them in particular was like, I won't say their name, but they're located on Route two fifty-six now in the city. They come to us first, and we had to tell them, zoning won't permit you to come here. And, and they're not the only ones, there are others as well, okay? But they don't always go to the city, they many times go elsewhere to another, to another community that wants their business and welcomes them, okay? And, and Ben, here's something else also, is that, is that, I kinda feel that the trustees were kinda led to believe that everybody else does conditional use. And our, our experience, did they get this? Our experience, if you look at this sheet here, okay, these are other townships that you are all aware of, including Atna Township, Greenville Township, and others. This tells you about the conditional use. These are hoop, these are communities we're competing with here in Violet Township. So, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, let's get in the game. Throw out, throw out what, what, that C two plus you were given, and go with the reasonable paragraph there, and just add those, and let our zoning code work, okay? The, it, for C two, it has been working, let it continue to work, and just add these, these handful of, of other businesses that should have been in C two all along, that's what we ask, okay? And as I say, the rest of the township can thank you all because you've done a great job. This is the only area that, that there's a lot of upset with right now, is, is the lack of economic development, and it basically rests entirely that lack of success on our zoning code, okay? So, that's about it, unless you've got any questions.
Questions for Mr. Sabatino, Mrs. Wild?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Dunlap?
No, I have none.
So if I understand you correctly, Mr. Sabatino, you are stating that, and I'm, and I'm gonna make sure that I'm phrasing this the right way, because I'm hearing conditional use as a legal term, and then you're maintaining that there are conditional uses that were, that were added, that were added additionally.
They added.
But not, not being of a legal term, but as additional hoops to jump through?
Well, I, I do want, I do, I do want to tell you, back when, in, in days that were nobody's proud of, okay, in the deep south, all right? The, the, I mean, you take zoning laws, then there's other laws, there's voting laws, okay? And, and the way it should be is, you have a published stated list of laws. That's what our C two section is, it's, it's published list, and, and anybody can look at it and say, well, I qualify or I don't, okay? But when you add the conditional use thing, they're not in there, what else you may have to have. There's, there's, they're not in there. When you go through the whole process, okay, then you gotta go in front of some board, and they can demand anything they want to. That's what conditional use is. They can tell you, well, we want this, or we think, we think that should be this color, okay, or we think this should be that, you know? They have no investment, no, no skin in the game, but, but they can come up with anything they want. Now, back when, that, they played that game with voting on people, those laws were called Jim Crow laws. And I'm telling you that this conditional use is very, very reminiscent of Jim Crow laws, because they can kill your deal just by asking a, just by demanding something that you can't comply with. If they don't like you for any reason, they don't like your look, your clothes, your gender, anything, they can kill your deal, and, and you, and you're out. And that's why we're not the only ones that know about these conditional use demands and so forth, okay? And at the end, on page five of what you were given, okay, section number thirteen, after they did all of this C two plus legislation, threw up extra barriers, if you have to have this much setback for the rest of C two, but for these automotive uses, they added, you know, and that type of thing, all right? And if you look here on page five, item thirteen, after you, you do all that, then they put, and any additional information as may be required by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that's the catch-all, it's anything else that the Board of Zoning Appeals wants to make you do in order to get your project. That's what I'm talking about, and that, that, that is reflective of a shameful past in our country, okay, that denied certain people rights. And I've, I've, we've been around zoning for decades, and I've heard actual zoning officials say things like, well, well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna grant it to any, any, any young person or whatever that, you know, that may not have a lot of money. Well, that young person may have been a veteran, maybe they're starting out in life, maybe they have a dream. Maybe they have a dream, okay? But the big corporation comes in with suitcases full of resources, and they know they can be sued when they deny them. They get a stamp of approval. They're good. But the person before who may not be in that situation, they get kicked to the curb and and the folks know there's not nothing, not much they can do about it. They can't afford these attorneys to take to take that to court and all that. So uh, we're just against uh, this conditional use business that they're that they're wanting to do. It is a zoning person's dream to have it because it gives them total power and control over the citizen, over the deal, over the over the zoning department of of a particular government entity. And and my guess is that's probably who dreamed it up, this whole conditional use thing. And it and it isn't that old. I remember when it didn't exist, giving away my age, but that that's what I remember. So I'm just saying, a a lot of people feel the same way I do, uh, that this conditional use is very uh, we don't need it, okay? We don't have it on a lot of other things. But now they want to make everything coming in, everything they want to make conditional use, to take complete control of people's destinies, their projects and whatever. But they're also seizing control of us, the residents, okay? In that, when they're preventing businesses from coming into our community, we foot the bill. They don't, okay? And I've even heard, and uh, I have a feeling some some of y'all may have even heard before where where they're not even worried about it. I mean, they're they'll, I've had zoning people tell me to my face, and I'd say, hey, don't you even care what the residents think? And and they laugh, and they say, no, we don't care. We don't have to run for election. And they're right. They don't. And that's the truth, okay? They don't. They're not accountable to the citizens. Okay? Now, um, the the, as as you all know, Holly, before she left, made between a hundred and sixty and a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year we paid in salary and benefits. And what do we get for our money? Okay? Did we get any economic development? Uh, or or what? And 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 again, I, it wasn't her fault. It's the zoning. It's the zoning code, okay? She she couldn't, she could bring fifty automotive businesses to this community who want to come here, and when they hit the zoning code, they're not allowed because there's no C three available in the refugee corridor where they want to be. They don't want to be out here in the boon docks with weeds in front of them. Customers won't come there. So they don't, they don't invest here. So not blaming uh, economic development, they they tried to do their job and all, but with this zoning code as it is now, they they, it's impossible. And you can see from the first handout we gave, when you require it to be C three and then you have none, there's no way you can, no way you can, you you can bring a business here. So I think you guys have a good grip now, and and uh, and uh, Trusty Dunlap, I'm very happy that you could see that that the game that's being played with um, you know, with 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 different sets of rules in C two for 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 these new businesses and not for the other businesses. So I do, I do think you guys have a grip on it. Is there anything else I can answer for anybody?
Any additional questions from the trustees?
So with that, if that last line was removed, that takes out any ambiguity, correct?
Well, um, actually, Trusty Wild, um, the the they they have packed this, what they sent you guys, with extra stuff, okay? At more than one occasion. Um, and then and then for good measure, at the end, they added on that extra line and anything else BZA wants. But the the bottom line is this, we have in in our zoning code today, C two, and we have rules in there, five pages of rules. Uh, if you are a business that's listed in C two, these are the rules. And anybody that wants to can look at them and go, okay, well, I can do that, you know, they can determine, uh, yeah, Violet Township looks like I could do it there, okay? And and all that we asked was that on uh, leave the rules as they are. And on the list of businesses, which, for example, is restaurants and, you know, pizza shops, beauty salons and all that, we just asked that you add the automotive uses to the list of what can be in C two. That's all we wanted. Just add those businesses on there. They should be on there. They should have been on C two anyway, okay? Not on C three. So just add that. That's all we wanted to do. We didn't want the wheel reinvented. We didn't want all of this stuff done. Eight months of work they put into, or eight, seven or eight months, they 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 messed with this and come up with all these schemes and contrivances, okay? To basically, basically torpedo any business wanting to come here for for automotive use. I can tell you now, we we do business with these companies. With what you're passing out, you're going to have the same result you've had, and it's going to continue to be a zero. I'm telling you now because we know what they want. The they they call us, they say, hey, what do you have in your area? They know we go from Columbus to Wheeling in that area. They want to know what locations we have. They know that we know what they want, what they need, you know, and all that. And Violet Township doesn't cut the mustard. They don't have it. So many, many times, we just leave Violet Township off the list of potential places that they could look at going because we know, we know we're wasting their time, and we don't want to do that. And if we waste their time, they'll quit calling us. So we give them places that that it'll fly, you know? They and and typically, this today and age, today's day and age, they're looking usually around five, six, seven million dollars in in investment. And, you know, they don't take it lightly. You know, they they're coming in to to do a business, they they're putting their money down a substantial amount. They want a chance of success. Um, and uh, so that's what I'm telling you. What you got is all tilted from the view of control, and the control is so high, it smothered the businesses that would consider coming to where they're not even going to come. And you, I mean, the 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 first handout you've got speaks for itself. Pickerington has twenty of these businesses with no problem. Check with the police chief. Have they ever had to send the cops to to one of these businesses because of trouble? No, okay? And all that. Check how much taxes they're paying and all that, the services they're providing, the local jobs and all that. They're not a problem, yet in Violet Township, Violet Township's against them. Uh, and and the action speaks for itself because a number of those businesses in the city of Pickerington came here first and was turned away. They they come to Violet Township first. Uh, they come to us in some cases, we we, because of properties we've owned. And we told them, Violet Township won't let you do it. Their zoning code won't permit it. They ask us why not? And I tell them, well, I've been trying to find that out for over twenty years, okay? And um, and and I'm and I'm telling, I'm sharing it with you guys tonight. I look at it like we don't have a whole lot to lose because this has gone on so long. Now, this, the the citizens have done part two of the study, okay, which they've not released. And I'm not, you know, I'm not sure that it that it's going to be released, but they do have it. I've seen it. And what it is, they have is they know the financial impact of of this economic development failure, what it's cost the residents. And I know what it is, and and I have to tell you, I I don't get surprised much or upset or whatever. You know, in other words, I've seen it, and I've seen what it's cost us, and it's staggering what it's cost us. Only a couple of people know know what that is. But and and their feeling is this, hey, if the if the trustees take the action, that you're on the right course now to turn this around? If if you if you go with with what we we recommended and for your consideration, to just make it C two and just add those few uses to the list of of things you can do in C two, forget about the conditional use and all that junk, uh, and all the enhanced requirements and all that, just add those businesses that should have been in C two to C two. Um, I know for a fact, you will start bringing, putting business on the scoreboard. You you will start bringing in commercial tax money that we should have been getting all along. You will, you will bring in help for the schools. You will lower the the residents' property taxes. You will provide some jobs and provide services for our residents. You have the power to do it, and it's only you three that can do it. Only you three can do it. And and the citizens are aware of all this. There's been meetings uh, and so forth. It's been discussed, and and it, they are serious now. And, you know, you may have heard certain things about people want an economic development. It's true. They 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 want some relief. Now, the last two school evries were turned down, okay? We also have a list of how many new homes are under construction right now. The schools are going to be in a real, true bona fide jam if we don't, if we don't get our act together and help with sending these kids to school and so forth. And and unless unless we bring in the commercial business, all of it's going to fall on the residents as pertains to the unincorporated part of Violet Township is what's going to happen. Very easy to see, okay? But if we can, if we can, to the updating of the of these updates is a good start. We can bring in some businesses, and I guarantee you, we could bring in some businesses that will locate here and make them multi-million dollar investments and pay those property taxes and do those things for our residents. It's all in your hands right here, right now to do that. Uh, and it's, you know, it's your choice. But we're asking that you do, we're trying to explain, you know, they send me in here to talk, okay? And um, but it is uh, it is a real thing. Uh, you know, we need to fix this. And uh, and I know, I know that uh, two of you guys have tried in the past. I don't, but uh, Trusty Wild, I don't know what you may have done or, you know, not, but but we need to fix this now, and we need to, you know, help our residents and their kids and so forth. Uh, it it's the right thing to do. It's what we should have been doing. And we'll see what happens, but that's pretty much the deal. Do you guys have any questions at all anymore?
The information you just gave us with the handout and the other stuff, was that presented to the zoning commission?
Um, yes, uh, well, the, some of it was, but here was the deal at the zoning commission. We sat out here, and they sat up there, and they discussed what they wanted to do. We had, didn't have much opportunity to put our two cents in. Go ahead. Yeah, really?
No, no, and I wasn't, we were also sold over it to flood it. It wasn't going to be conditional use.
Right. Early on, we were told if it wasn't going to be conditional use, that that they weren't even going to do anything. And 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 we initially, from the beginning, said, we didn't want conditional use, the citizens group. So I, and I told Jen that. Then I, we went back, had meetings with our people, and they said, look, let them do, let the zoning commission do what they want to do. You you, we can't control it, okay? Um, when, and Jen, if you remember, when they had the discussion about lot size, it was like almost heated between two of the members, we couldn't, we couldn't say anything, okay? And we didn't.
Let's let's let him conclude his comments, and then we'll give you an opportunity to come back up. Mr. Sabatino, have you concluded your comments?
Right. And I do want to say, we we got to say a little bit. We didn't get to say a whole lot, is what I'm telling you. We sat down here, and we weren't at the podium either. We got very little input. Now, we were here, Jen disagrees, I can see by her shaking her head, we were here, okay? But we weren't up there, and we weren't part of the discussion. We got a comment here or there. That's all we got, all right? And but we knew, okay, that they're going to do what they're going to do, and then it's going to rest upon you, our elected officials. So we we figured, well, whether than they do nothing, then let them do what they're going to do, and then the citizens will appeal directly to our elected officials to 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 get to make this right. That that's the way it went down. That's the way, that's our perception, Jen, okay? We did say a few things. We didn't get to say a lot, okay? That's our, that's our perception. All right? Is anything else for you guys?
Okay, yeah. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to make public comment? Ms. Huber? Would you like to approach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jennifer Huber. Um, there are a couple statements and misstatements. Um, the board may not have questions about them, but I think it's important for the record to clarify. Um, first, Mr. Sabatino referenced a correspondence that he and I had today, and I would like to read the contents of that correspondence into the record because, to the extent, and I don't know if this was his intent, but to the extent he indicated that I somehow agreed or approved or said that the board could could or should do something with respect to the text you received tonight, I saw it tonight, three minutes after you saw it. That's the first time I have seen the handout that came to you this evening with this proposed text. So the email I shared with him reads as follows. It's very short. I'll I'll bore you. Rocco, Ohio Revised Code, Section five nineteen twelve H, provides that, quote, "Within twenty days after its public hearing, the Board of Township Trustees shall either adopt or deny the recommendations of the Township Zoning Commission or adopt some modification of them. If the Board denies or modifies the Commission's recommendations, a majority vote of the Board shall be required. Sincerely, Jen." Was the extent of my email regarding the proposal that you've been presented with this evening. The second item, um, there were several references to the zoning department. I think that was probably just an accidental statement because Mr. and Mrs. Sabatino know because they were there. The recommendations and modifications you have in front of you came directly from the zoning commission. I'd also like to take the opportunity to point out that the zoning commission, that is the legislative body that is a recommending body to this board, is not the same body that would consider a conditional use because that's the Board of Zoning Appeals. So to the extent there's a statement about the board that set the rules would like to be the one that enforces them, that that would never happen. Those bodies are separate for a reason, um, as 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 by statute. Uh, third, I guess, uh, it's clear, probably clear at this point to the board, that maybe we weren't at the same meeting because the meetings I was at in front of the zoning commission, um, were that the Sabatinos had item by item input on the conditions and changes the zoning commission members were considering, um, including, um, the question was posed whether it would be amenable to the Sabatinos who who through their entities are property owners in of property that could be affected by this amendment. It was asked of them, you know, you're a private partner in some of this process to some extent, and I'll read from that email as well. Um, this is signed Dara LT Sabatino, and one sentence of it is, although not our first choice, the requirement of conditional use approval would be acceptable. That email stated Monday, March first, twenty twenty one, and I believe that's been provided to Mr. Drabina and/or the trustees prior, but I'm happy to re-provide it as well. And I'm only saying that, I'm not trying to fact check anyone. I'm just, I I'm at a bit of a loss on some of the comments that were made here tonight because this is the first time that I've heard them or that the zoning commissions, I mean, who didn't hear them, um, or that the zoning officer or other other components of this process have have heard heard those comments. Uh, additionally, there are whole sections in the Ohio law and in your zoning code that address conditional uses. The implication that there is something nefarious about putting a a use into a category of a conditional use is simply untrue on its face. Um, the Ohio law specifically provides for there to be permitted uses, which, like the Sabatinos have indicated, if you meet the criteria in the zoning code, you you get to do, right? For lack of a better, a better explanation. Conditional uses by nature of the use, um, and in this case, actually, Pickerington and Canal are some of the local jurisdictions, nearby local jurisdictions consider consider these types of uses, conditional uses, not permitted uses. Uh, but those two categories, permitted and conditional, are used throughout the state, throughout counties and townships around the state, and I would hazard the nation to define what uses should be categorized, what type of oversight they should have for them to go in in the various locations because each project is different and may have different concerns and considerations. And last but not least, the comment about, uh, and this is a minor one, and again, I think maybe just a misunderstanding or a misstatement, that C two uses weren't permitted along the corridor. I I mean, you can, you can always. Uh, I mean, you can, you can always, or C3, I apologize. My apologies. Uh, or that C3 or these, or these types of uses, um, as the board is well aware, there's a process for that. It's rezoning. So, I mean, if they weren't on the map, that's not to say they could never be on the map. Um, I'm happy to answer any additional questions, those are the items I had.
Any additional questions from Ms. Huber, Mrs. Wild?
Uh, no, thank you.
Mr. Dunlap?
The document that they gave us tonight on the 3Q C2 district limited commercial reads fairly close to what's under auto-related establishments in what the zoning board sent us. Could those be merged in some way?
Uh, so they differ in the key components of that. I mean, it may be very similar, um, text as in some of the sections of the text that the zoning commission sent to you. However, the posture i- is completely different. Um, the text you've, and, and again, I, I'm only just looking at it. I've seen it for, you know, 15 minutes. But my understanding from Mr. Sabatino's comments and from looking at this page is that it would come in again as a permitted use, and this would be the paragraph. This would be the only governing standard. If something met those standards, which is, I mean, that's it. Um, then it could come in as a permitted use. It would not go to any board. It would not go to the BCA. It just could go if it met those criteria. Now, if it needed a variance, it would have to come in before the BCA. Um, and there certainly would be other jurisdictions that would have governance over it as well, but that, that would be the extent of the governance on the township side. Unless there are some general development standards that might also apply. Up the top of my head, I'm not sure what those would be. But it wouldn't be reviewed absent needing some sort of variance or, um, at the point of applying for a permit, I suppose.
What's our legal procedure or what we, what are we required? Since this came to us as a, uh, conditional use, do we have the authority to change it to a straight permitted use? Or do we have to deny it and start the process? What happens there?
You do have the authority. Um, the statutory section I read to you before and, and mentioned to Mr. Sabatino, 51912H, um, because the zoning commission is a recommending body by statute to you, the Board of Trustees, you can, uh, if you like, if, at any point, right? If you like the zoning commission's recommendations, you, you give them a thumbs up. If you don't like them, you can, you can give it a thumbs down. And if you want some different plan, some different text, you at any point can modify what's in front of you. So you absolutely could change what the zoning commission had sent to you in, in any way you saw fit.
That's one thing I have right now.
I have no additional questions for you at this point. Thank you. Mrs. Sabatino, state your name and address, please.
My, my name is Darad Sabatino, 8918 Shevington Chase Drive, Pickerington, Ohio 43147.
Can you speak up a little closer to my?
I certainly can, sorry. Darad Sabatino, 8918 Shevington Chase Drive, Pickerington, Ohio 43147. And, um, I just wanted to rebut a few things that Jen said and for, more for clarification. Um, number one, yes, I did, we did email regarding it being a conditional use. And the conversation that I recollect was that basically other areas do conditional use, and so the Board of Zoning, the zoning commission wants to do conditional use. And if you're not okay with that, then pretty much it's a dead issue. So in my opinion, we didn't have the choices to whether it should, would be conditional use or not. We had, we worked off of the zoning commission's initial document in June, but it wasn't like that was even up for discussion, whether it was, whether automotive-related establishment should be a conditional use or not. Um, we did have some input in those things, and then there are other things where, you know, we tried to put in input and, um, you know, there, there was an impasse. For example, one of the things, if you'll notice in the conditional use request, they want a setback between automotive establishments and other commercial establishments. In the regular zoning code, if it's commercial to commercial, there are zero setbacks. And the reason for that is because oftentimes it can be where there's a building up against the property line. It can be shared parking. The Kroger on Refugee Road is a separate entity from the strip center that's next to it. So if one of those was going to be an automotive use under the way that's, that has been presented to you is you would need a 25-foot setback between those two, between those two entities. And so the idea that for some reason automotive establishments should be treated differently in that respect um, seemed, you know, unreasonable. Now, also, there are some other things, uh, one other thing, and I guess the, the, the point is, is that leaving automotive establishments in C3 equates them to adult businesses. I mean, C3 is also where you have adult entertainment. I don't think that adult entertainment and automotive-related establishments have an equal impact on the community. And so I think that it makes sense as an automotive establishment should be C2. And as Rocco said earlier, there are ones actually in the city that are within the city limits of the downtown old Pickerington area even, where they haven't been a problem. You know, there are safeguards in the zoning code as it's written that there has to be a, um, fence or landscaping between residential and commercial regardless. So to, again, have separate things just because it's on automotive use, oftentimes these businesses close at seven o'clock. Some of them are even closed on Sunday. And the provisions that are in that, that one paragraph, there are items in there to protect the citizens and the residents. For example, having the commercial on three side, on, on three sides is still in there. Being on a major collector is still in there. The three sides of commercial, there are businesses in Pickerington that would not qualify for that that are on 256. So Refugee Road, it's already been in the paper. It's going to be a five-lane thoroughfare down to Tollgate Road. There, you know, there's no stop in the development, but to allow these businesses, you know, in that C2 corridor where there is no C3. And I understand people not wanting to open it up to C3 because of the other things that C3 opens the door to. But there are safeguards in the zoning code standards of what C2 businesses have to follow that will protect. And, uh, just a quick example on the, um, and I honestly didn't notice this till it was pointed out to me this evening. On the, um, proposal that the zoning commission sent to you on page eight, I'm sorry, page four, number four, on signage, the provision of signage notwithstanding, at the last line of number four, "Surface signs shall only be permitted when located in and planned in conjunction with a landscape bed or landscape area." Now, I, I searched the zoning code, and that is the only place that that is required. And again, it's, it's a, to me, it seemed a, a, a trivial, um, requirement on an automotive businesses. It's really unnecessary that the land, that the, you know, signage is landscape. Um, it's just, there's so many things in here. We're, we're just trying to make it where these businesses can come and they can get started. You know, we, this, this has been in the zoning commission for like six months. If it goes conditional use, I mean, businesses are going to be looking at, you know, six, eight months or more by the time they, they, they get their plans done, then they file it, they have those, those costs. And they have these costs, and they're not even sure that the zoning commission is, or I'm sorry, the BCA is going to approve them. They have the cost of time and money and resources, and they're not even sure it's going to be approved. You know, it really makes them consider, well, is this the best fit for our business? And it would be nice to be able to have shovel-ready, so to speak, opportunities for businesses that want to come to the, uh, to the township. So, you know, like I said, I just wanted to address, you know, the email with Jen about the, uh, conditional use. Um, and as far as, and I was involved in the conversation with Rocco, asked her about the, um, ORC code, about, you know, how this goes tonight. It was by no means to imply that she was giving an approval for you guys to approve anything other than what zoning, the zoning commission wanted. And it was just that, and as far as the zoning commission, um, the zoning commission, yes, it is separate from BCA, but they're the ones that set these rules. So they have their input, but then you still have the unknown of the input of the BCA. And the BCA also is not, not only are they not elected officials that we're, if we're not happy, you know, if you're not happy, you have some recourse. You have no recourse if they deny you because it doesn't come to you guys for final approval. So that's another consideration. Um, that's all I can think of. If you have any questions with me, that's fine. If not, thank you for your time.
Any questions, Mrs. Wild?
I have none.
Mr. Dunlap?
I have none, other than if, if something goes to the BCA and you're denied, you have the right of appeal to the Fairford County Public Police Court.
But again, that, yeah, but that is time and money again. But yes, you are correct, but again, it doesn't come before our elected officials. Thank you though, yes.
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just clarify, Rocco De Sabatino, a couple of things Jen said. There obviously is some misunderstanding, okay? When I refer to the zoning department, I'm not referring to just Kelly. I'm referring to the whole zoning process. I'm referring to the zoning commission, to the BCA, Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, the zoning department. To me, the zoning department is everything to do with zoning. That's why I'm calling the zoning department. I'm not making a distinction, not picking on Kelly. Personally, I like Kelly. I think she's a nice person, but, but the but is, okay? Zoning wants complete, total control of people's properties. And this is what they're working for, okay? All right? Now, um, this, this thing about, you, you go through all this stuff with the, with the zoning, then as Dee said, okay, now you got to go to the BCA and jump through all their hoops. Now, I was told by a person that had a case here, okay? They had run up his attorney bill coming to these meetings by over 30 grand, okay? It cost him to have his attorney accompany him to meeting after meeting after meeting and that, okay? Now, that 30 grand could have been used to invest in our community, all right? But instead, it went towards the administrative costs required to even try to grapple with Violet Township on, on bringing a business. Uh, I'm just saying, folks, you guys are all intelligent people, okay? The, the, the rules that are in C2, they can put anything they want in the regular rules, okay? Put it in there, but then just so people know upfront, we're going to require this or that. Don't, don't do it with this, uh, with this conditional use. Well, comply with all these rules, and after you do all that, then we'll let you know what else you got to comply with. Because some folks might say, well, if I knew that, I wouldn't have done any of this. And what, and that's what's happening now in Violet Township, all right? And then this thing about, well, rezone something to C3? I, I think if you guys would look it up, the last time something may have been rezoned to C3, as Dee said, that would mean that you can have, you know, a lion's den or whatever in C3. That's what it would allow. Try, try to get a C3 zoning in Violet Township. See how long it will take and what it will cost you. So that, that thing about, well, you can go, you can rezone to C3. Yeah, on paper you can, uh, you know? And in law, there's a thing called theory, and there's a thing called, you know, practical, practability. Well, the theory, yeah, in theory you can try to rezone to C3. Ain't going to happen. And the practical thing is, is that it ain't going to happen. So it's no excuse that, that you could go to C3, okay? Um, I'm just saying that, you know, you guys are intelligent. You know the score. You know what's going on. You know what the results have been, uh, and all that. And, and so do the residents at a higher degree and level that I've ever seen in all the years that I've lived here. They now are catching on and understand property taxes and, 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 and we need a balanced economy. You know, not just gillions of houses with no commercial to help offset some of those costs. And, and, and you guys have been, we have, I have to say, you have tried. And, and now with the cooperation of, of the trustees working together, you can accomplish it. You can, you, you can start bringing in commercial business that, that brings dollars into the community and give the residents and schools some relief that, that you're not looking to just the residents to keep piling debt on their houses or the costs on their houses, okay? Because we don't have the commercial business. But it's where the citizens realize we're depending on you three. You have to take charge regardless of what you're told and whatever. Use your common sense and take charge. And, and I'm telling you, if you do the right thing, you will start putting business on the scoreboard, okay? You will start bringing in those dollars and those investments to this community. And business will want to be here if you do not have a hostile environment against them, which is what, what we're dealing with. That, that document you were given tonight is hostile towards business, okay? Just put yourself on the side of business and, and think, well, I got to do all that. And, and then they particularly picked on me because I'm an automotive company, uh, okay? Uh, you know, I'm a national automotive company perhaps, but they picked on me, and I got to do all the extra things that the other people in C2 don't have to. If I do a pizza shop, or I do a beauty salon or whatever, I don't have to do all that extra. But I got to do all that extra because I'm automotive? Why is that, they say? And part of the messages that comes through to them is just they don't want me here. And, and that's fact, and that's what the township has gotten. They're not here. And again, I refer to the first handout. You've seen what the score is. So I'm just saying, we are counting on you three to, to take charge, run the township, do the right thing, balance the books on commercial and residential, okay? And, and you know, you can compete with the city. There's no reason you can't. And, and some of, in some of the deals, the city got them because, because you wouldn't compete. And I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you straight up. You guys have it, you know, you know, you know what you can do. And I'm saying if you will do that simple thing and just add those uses to the already existing zoning code, C2, all the rules. And then secondly, all of those businesses are also subject many times to county rules, state rules, licensing, and all this other stuff as added protections. Uh, they, it's not just the township, but they can't even get past the township. Uh, you know, as it stands right now, you all can change it. And that's what we're asking you tonight. We're asking you to stand up for the people, do the right thing, and we appreciate it. And, and I got to say, in everything else, there are no, you're doing an outstanding job. And there, there's no reason that you couldn't do an outstanding job on this as well. But you're going to have to provide the leadership, okay, to, to make it happen. That's what I'm saying. And if you provide that leadership, you can make it happen. Um, and we can, we can start bringing in these businesses. Absolutely. Anything else that I can say?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Any, anyone else in the audience care to make comment?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dunlap.
Since there's been a lot added here tonight that we didn't have, that came from the zoning commission, um, I would move that we continue the public hearing to our next meeting so that we can compare what's been presented and see where we need to go from there.
Second.
Uh, to the next trustee meeting on the 18th at, uh, eight o'clock here.
Mrs. Neecamp, call the rule.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Move to return to the regular trustee meeting.
I will second that. Sneecamp, call the rule.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Motion passes.
As, as I see it here.
You wouldn't know the motion, don't you?
Need a motion to adjourn?
No.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry.
I move that we take a 10-minute recess and then go into executive session for the Ohio Revised Code 121.11G1. and then go into executive session for the high revised code 121.11G1 to consider the employment of, of a public employee.
Second.
And then when we come out of that, we conduct no further business.
Mrs. Neecamp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're in a 10-minute recess.
I'm going to run to the restroom in case this is long.
Not in a public, you're not in a public hearing. You don't put a time limit on people speaking in a public hearing. You got to put a time limit on how long you're going to stay. You could have left.